And start, um, welcome. This is the June fifth meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. Now called to order. I'm Scott Halopka, Chair of the Board. We will now start the meeting with a roll call to account for the members of the Board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Ray.
Aye.
Mr. Bratty.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Mr. DeVall.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hitten.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
I know Ms. Lilly is at her son's high school graduation. Uh, Ms. Muneses.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Schulman.
Aye.
And Mr. Tennant. Okay. Will you now please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes.
In the May twenty ninth email, you received draft minutes for the May fifteenth meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review the draft minutes. Are there any corrections or additions? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion.
Second. Second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oh. Thank you. The first item on our agenda, we have a presentation from, uh, Ms. Amy Mantey, the Deputy Director of the Department of Planning. On cycle zoning requests for eight six three five to eight six four one Lock Raven Boulevard. And seventeen oh three seventeen oh five East Joppa Road. Ms. Mantey.
Sure. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Um, tonight's not so much a presentation as just a quick introduction. Um, in February twenty twenty five, the petitioner known as eighty six thirty five Lock Raven Boulevard LLC. Submitted a petition for reclassification, seeking a change in zoning through the cycle zoning process. Uh, the petition is for reclassification of portions of eighty six thirty five through eighty eighty six forty one Lock Raven Boulevard. And seventeen oh three through seventeen oh five East Joppa Road. The petitioner seeking a change in zoning designation from BL, Business Local. To BM CCC, Business Major Commercial Community Core District. Citing a significant change in the neighborhood. And a technical mapping error that the areas currently requested for rezoning were intended to be included. In the CZMP twenty twenty four issue six dash zero zero four. To which the sites, uh, listed in this reclassification are adjacent. The petition was filed with the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections. And was forwarded to the Department of Planning for presentation here to the Planning Board in accordance with the county code. Following the Planning Board review, the matter will move on to the Board of Appeals for final determination. The department asked the Planning Board to set a date for the public hearing. At which time we'll provide a more detailed presentation on the reclassification request. As well as some background about the cycle zoning process. You'll also hear from the petitioner at that time.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions at this time from anyone on the board? Not hearing any, I will entertain a motion to set a public hearing.
Motion.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board sets an in-person public hearing regarding the cycle one twenty twenty five petition for reclassification. For eight six three five through eight six four one Lock Raven Boulevard. Slash one seven oh three to one seven oh five East Joppa Road. Case number R two zero two five zero zero five zero Lock Raven Boulevard for Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty five at five PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Eyes have it. As stated, the public hearing will be in in person on Tuesday, June seventeenth. As the county offices are closed that Thursday for Juneteenth. Next on the agenda, again, we had talked about this before of getting some special presentations on various topics. The first topic that we are going to hear about. Are the changes that were made to the master plan and sort of the final accepted version of the master plan twenty thirty. Please join me, I've, you know. I think several members of the planning staff are going to be, uh, presenting tonight, so please join me in welcoming the planning staff.
Chairman and members of the board, um, I'm Amy Mantey, Deputy Director, and I'll be going over, um. This request that came from the board to get an overview of, um, the changes that were made to the master plan after it left Planning Board and it went to County Council. Um, before their adoption. So, there are a lot of slides here. I'm gonna go through it as quickly as I can because they're about sixty. Um, I've tried to highlight where they have taken place. And, uh, you'll have materials afterwards if you want to go back and kind of look at it more one-on-one yourself. So, the Baltimore County Master Plan twenty thirty was adopted by council, um, on January sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Just as a reminder, um, the amendments that were made to the content of the online plan, um. Were kind of moved into, um, a PDF or a hard copy. Um, this was requested by the County Council when they were reviewing the plan. Um, they did not feel that the online version was was substantial enough for them to be able to adopt and make amendments to. So we had to create an after the fact, which is not the document that you saw. You guys saw the, uh, the version online. Um, but we had to kind of take all that content and and put it into a PDF. So, as I go through this, that's what I'm referencing. I'm not referencing the hub. Um, we took all the material on the hub, um, again, and and laid it out here in this hard copy version. All the pieces that you saw, um, online are here. Um, you do lose a little bit of being able to interact with some of the maps and zoom zoom in and out. So while the maps are a lot smaller now. Um, but that's sort of, um, kind of where things were were left. So I'm gonna go through, um, and just kind of note what was added, what was changed. Um, like I said, as quickly as I can, uh, something that was added by all council, they wanted a statement stating. Uh, the official format of the master plan shall be in a printed vo- format. But the master plan may also be viewed as a series of Esri RGIS story maps. So for the overview, um, Councilman Patoka added in this section that according to master plan twen- accordingly, master plan twenty thirty should have been adopted in twenty twenty. But has been delayed due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So as I go through these, I'm gonna try to list the councilperson who was involved, whether it was added or removed. And highlight the page, the section in the plan, um, where the edit happened. Um, on this page, still in the overview, Patoka added, uh, the language after master plan twenty thirty is adopted. Any change to the plan must be made legislatively by County Council. Uh, Councilman Patoka also asked that we reorder, um, some of the elements that we had listed in the plan originally. The first one was, uh, equity, then sustainability, then vibrant communities. Those were reordered to vibrant communities, equity, and sustainability. Uh, Patoka also added, the county county should strive to make the capital budget a living document whereby the capital budget identifies capital projects in year six of the capital improvement program. That move forward in each succeeding year until they reach the budget year so that neighborhoods and communities will have predictability of when improvements will take place. Uh, Councilman Jones added, um, here in this section. That sources listed on the resource page are provided for reference only, and the sources and their contents are not part of the master plan twenty thirty. And this is in reference to things where we had listed other plans, other county adopted plans, those types of things. Um, Jones also added. The, um, intention of the master plan twenty thirty vision framework is to establish high-level strategic goals for the county at large. Land use decisions concerning individual parcels or projects are not required to conform. To the vision framework and instead should be evaluated on a case-by-case basis through applicable development improvement channels. While every effort will be made to implement the goals of the vision framework, the information contained therein shall not be considered mandates. But rather aspirational goals for the long-term planning strategy of Baltimore County. Uh, Councilman Patoka added, um, in this piece that all changes must be adopted by the Planning Board and the County Council. For the growth framework, um, Marx, Councilman Marx removed a section of this statement. Um, through the adoption of the Earl and subsequent master plans, the county has. Created a growth boundary that channeled infrastructure and investment and growth inside the Earl. This was based on fiscal analysis. So he removed, um, some of our more descriptive, uh, language about what the Earl, um, is, the urban rural environment, that kind of thing.
Amy?
Yeah.
Can I stop you? What? If you can, you go back a second, the the previous one. Um. What was the fiscal analysis that he's referring to?
I do not know.
Okay.
It is very likely that we will not have a lot of answers to questions as to the amendments they made or why.
Sure, sure. I was just, okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, Patoka added here, County Council should revise or remove zoning regulations that are no longer app- applicable to twenty-first century planning principles. This may include amending zoning zoning classifications that are interdependent or on antiquated terms or classifications and eliminating unnecessarily. Unnecessary hurdles in CZMP. Those were not further defined. Uh, Councilman Jones added, um, here that the primary and secondary uses listed in the place types below are examples for, uh, demonstrative. Purposes only, the uses listed shall not limit the permitted uses of any specific project, property, or tract. Patoka added, prom and productive agricultural lands and soils should have limited development throughout areas outside of the Earl. Um, this one is a a lot of changes, um, and additions here from Marx, uh, related to the established neighborhood. Um, areas within the Earl not within connected neighborhoods, the nodes nodes consist of. And he removed, um, some of our wording about established commercial and residential. Wide variety of areas that range from existing low-density residential developments to. Residential neighborhoods to denser mixed-use areas containing a wide variety of uses along major corridors. He also removed, uh, limited, where we had there is some limited opportunity. Um, and but measures taken, measures should be taken to avoid negative impacts to existing residential neighborhoods. Um, again, he removed some of the language about, um, the nature and the character of the residential neighborhood should not change in the near future. Um, and that established neighborhoods are currently served with po- public water and sewer. He then further struck, um, some of our descriptive terms that were consistent with it within each of these. Um, place types, uh, where we had listed what the primary land use was and what the secondary land use is. Um, similar here, um, he made some, uh, similar, uh, changes to this one, removing those primary and secondary land uses. Um, changing some of our wording from consist of to have a wide variety of uses, including a mix of commercial office. Industrial residential areas and uses usually at a denser concentration than established neighborhoods. May these areas present opportunities for infill development and redevelopment. Um, including adding housing, um, the places contain a dense population of residents and employees and visitors to support the node. Um, for this one, this was Councilman Young. Um, he added a new node type called institutional node, and so we originally had four, and at this point we had five. Um, this one's also from Councilman Young within the place type, so he had added that fifth one, so it's added here again in this language where it was noted in the plan. Um, for this piece. Having to move my WebEx window around, um, for this piece where we had nodes named, uh, Patoka, uh, wanted this one changed to inner beltway.
Amy, before you go on, going back to, uh, Councilman Young's changes. Uh, those were specifically to focus on, uh, UMBC. And the land around UMBC. Uh, there's been a major development proposed in that area for a number of years. And the councilman wanted to open up the opportunity. Or redevelopment opportunities both on the UMBC property, but adjacent or nearby it. Thanks, Amy. Sorry to interrupt you.
Um, so, uh, further expounding on that, uh, Young added this language to describe this new. Uh, node type that he had in had introduced called institutional. Um, I am not going to read this entire thing, um, but it does talk about, you know, the relationship to the University of Maryland. Um, and the connection to Arbutus, um, the Spring Grove property. Um, potential for development and retrofitting in this area. Um, and added primary land use of commercial office, civic institutional, multifamily residential with secondary uses. Um, open space and light industrial.
So, the again, so th- this doesn't apply to any other, doesn't currently apply to any other college campuses or.
No, this was.
Just UMBC.
This one was identified, this industrial node was identified for that that one area.
Okay.
Um, for this area, um, Marx removed, um, some descriptions that we had, um, about Lafarge in this point. Um, so currently designated, this currently this designation applies to the Trade Point Atlantic site and to University of Maryland, Baltimore County. So here, um, in the special use. Just trying to see where they, um. Yeah, the industrial and manufacturing, okay. Um, this was a section that was removed entirely, um, wherever there was a reference to Lafarge, um, a lot of that was, um, removed. So there's not a page to demonstrate because that doesn't exist anymore, but it had been a caption of Lafarge Quarry. Um, Patoka added, um, creation of comprehensive master plan, followed by the development of small area plans throughout the county here. Um, then we moved on to the vision framework if, um, let's see. So this was the part where we had these recommendations by kind of topics. So in the first section, um, of the livable built environment, I believe this one is. Um, Marx removed some language about the Earl. Um, about, uh, creative redevelopment framework that reinforces the existing urban rural demarcation line, focuses on redevelopment. Um, and, uh, redevelopment strategies through community planning policies, and it ended there. Some of the sections that we had where we talked about Earl was removed. Um, this is a lot here, um, there was some reordering of the actions. Um, because another action was added in, so the new action was review zoning regulations to prevent the oversaturation of certain businesses. Such as concentration of self-storage warehouse, tattoo parlors, fuel stations, auto parts store within a few blocks. Um, this was all, um, edits by Councilman Rattel. And then, like I said, the remaining ones were just reordered. Uh, similar situation, um, this one is a mix of edits to this one section by both Councilman Patoka. And Marx at the end, um, Marx removed an action, um, that was at the end about, um, finalize the ongoing study of county-owned land. Um, to identify underutilized areas. And then, uh, Patoka added, ensure that there are updated adequate public facility guidelines in place. Beyond that, they were just reordered because of the things that were removed and added. Um, similar again here, uh, Patoka added, um, an action. Uh, to amend the automotive services overlay district to accommodate electric vehicles. Um, then these items were kind of reordered after that addition. Um, Marx then added to more actions, what about road expansions that were very specific to roads in his district? Um, talking about projects that directly connect Forge Road to Bel Air Road, as well as Compass Road to Wampler Road. Uh, or advance any lane expansion Chapel Road and Perry Hall, Ebenezer Road and Middle River. Um, and then he also added another very specific to his district. Prioritize the construction of an eastbound connection from Philadelphia Road to White Marsh Boulevard. Um, for this one, um, Marx added some language, um, onto this action. Uh, for expanding and updating sewer systems, um, where there's a clear path, clear health need, not merely to drive new development. Um, he, and then Urteil added, um, review and expand the county's annual road resurfacing budget, um, to repair, replace, repave. Um, this was an addition by Patoka to support community historic preservation committees so that their actions are meaningful. Uh, this was a piece that was added, um, by, uh, Councilman Marx, again, very specific to his district. Um, where he noted that a smaller plan should be initiated immediately after the adoption of the master plan. Specifically to include White Marsh, um, and areas on the east side, Quarry, um, Essex, CP Crane, um, in those areas. Just, am I trying to say something? Sorry. Um, this was another one by Patoka, um, he added some language onto the end of this action. Uh, to lengthen the maintenance period related to reforestation. Marx added another, uh, action here to the skull to support the protection and enhancement of lightly-developed agricultural areas. That remain in urbanized communities such as Chapel Road Corridor and Perry Hall and Hidden Waters Farm in Jacksonville. Um, these are some additions and removals. Patoka added some language onto action four about pocket parks. Um, to focus on areas in high population, especially in the more urbanized areas of Baltimore County. Um, Marx removed some language in action five about retreat Baltimore County. Uh, removed the statement about equity-based tree planting. Um, to not only involve older high-density areas, but also growth areas built between nineteen eighty and two thousand. Um, to the end of goal two, action nine, Patoka added, uh, is critical for the school system to participate in this area. Where they were talking about, um, expanding knowledge about environmental and sustainability issues. Um, Patoka added some language to the end of this goal, action eight. Um, evaluate and implement education enforcement and infrastructure strategies to curb littering. Um, it's critical, again, for the school system to participate in this effort, um, was his addition. Um, this one is, um, added by Patoka, action fourteen to phase out vacant fuel stations and incentivize those for redevelopment. He also added action fifteen to evaluate the county's solar facility statute to ensure impacts are minimized on historic rural communities. Marx added action sixteen, when considering development approvals for solar facility sites, target brownfields and impervious surfaces. Urteil added here, action eleven, expand opportunities for job training to meet employment needs in the county's industrial areas. Uh, Patoka added on to action three, um, to work with surrounding jurisdictions for sustainable development of housing and employment centers. Um, as well as support the creation of a regional water authority. Uh, Patoka added on to action six. Um, about, uh, provide notification of development activity in geographic areas for any community group that requests it. Restructure the county website to make the development meetings, development plans, and related information easier to locate and user-friendly. Um, Patoka removed, um, this section in, uh, action six about hiring an equity and inclusion planner and replaced with consider hiring. More area and community planners to administer, um, community organizations and planning efforts. Uh, Urteil added action eight in this section to support community education programs on code enforcement issues. Um, and other violations that, uh, affect quality of life in communities and neighborhoods. Uh, Marx added on to action six about modernizing and updating the police and fire departments, aging facilities. And to support the construction and renovation of new and existing career and volunteer fire stations. Patoka added, um, action seven here to reform the adequate public facilities ordn- ordinance. Um, to address chronic school overcrowding, um, Marx added action eight. Uh, to strengthen and stabilize the Belmont Dunfield area by increasing community resources and recreational areas. Um, these were, uh, three actions that were added to goal four, um, by Councilman Patoka. Um, one was to create a network of connecting parks throughout the county. Uh, action seven was to increase the county's tree canopy, especially in areas of deficiency. Action eight was to promote synergies among Baltimore County Property Management, Reckon Parks, BCPS, to clarify management of shared use facilities. Um, so for the appendix section, um, there were some amendments added here as well. Um, Councilman Catch, uh, added, as used in master plan twenty thirty, a living document is a document or set of documents. As required by the county charter, um, that after adoption by the county council may only be amendment amended with the approval of the county council. Clarifying our use of the word living document, um, that was in the hub. Um, in appendix to the growth framework. Um, Marx, um, added land designated as intensely developed area IDA in the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area. Outside the Earl should be served by public water and sewer to ensure protection of high-quality natural resources and restoration of impaired waterways. Urteil added, currently the county's stormwater management infrastructure is often inadequate. Um, in the face of severe storms that are becoming a regular occurrence. Um, many recent significant rain events have caused vital county sewer pipes to fail. Marx added that the Chesapeake Bay Program estimates that in the future, increased precipitation and storms, um, of greater intensity could. Generate more pollutant runoff and reduce the menace of stormwater. Um, there were some edits to the place types map. Um, Young, uh, as we mentioned before, added this new institutional node, so that was also added, um, to the map. Um, in that area, you can see it by the circle down there. Um, for this one, Councilman Catch, um. Created a new mobility node that was located east of Beaver Dam Road, west of York Road, north of Ol' Pedonia Road, and south of Church Lane. So we had mobility nodes identified according to our, um, analysis, and he just added another one, um, bounded by the specific information that he he listed here. Um, Councilman Marx added another neighborhood mo- node called Belmont Dunfield. That is, is a rough circle centered around townhomes and apartments bounded by Walther Boulevard, Dunfield Road, and Kintor Drive. Um, Councilman Crandall, um, removed all the nodes within the seventh district. Um, so, um, which included, um, portion of the neighborhood road at Pulaski Highway. The neighborhood node east at Eastern Boulevard, the one, um, at Eastern Boulevard along Middle River. Um, Back River Neck, Dundalk Avenue, Merritt Boulevard, and the node that was at the intersection of Solers Point Road, Merritt and Merritt Boulevard. And the regional commercial node at East Point Mall. Since the master plan was adopted, uh, in January sixteenth, there have been new amendments by council. Um, so we wanted to highlight those as well. Uh, resolution eight dash two five, which, uh, was adopted on January twenty first, twenty twenty five, was to amend. Goal three, action twelve of the livable built environment section. Um, he added, uh, in the section about, uh, if you remember earlier, there was a very specific amendment he made to some road projects in his district. Along Compass Road, Wampler, um, and he added Oregon View Road from its terminus at Gunpowder Falls State Park to Bel Air Road. Resolution nineteen twenty five, uh, came through in April, uh, to adopt and incorporate the Jacksonville Community Plan as amendment to master plan twenty thirty. The Jacksonville Village Place Type was updated to include a commercial property that was originally given the rural residential place type. Which is how it was referred to in the past master plan. And that was Councilman Catch and Councilman Marx. And that is all.
Thank you very much. That's a lot to get through and a. Uh, thank you. Will we be able to get a copy of the, your presentation?
Yes.
That would be great.
Yeah, Taylor will be sending that, and I think she already sent the, um, PDF of the master plan.
Yeah, that that we got, but yeah, I had not seen the with the the notations. That would be useful. Um, any board members have any comments, questions? None?
Mr. Chairman, since there was a lot of information and as, uh, Amy was able to share, the council did, uh, take, uh. Take your work, the planning board's work, and made significant changes. Certainly after reviews, if people have further questions, please reach out to us. Um, we'll, we'll try to best explain what we can or establish a context if it's not clear. Uh, to make sure that the. Playing board members understand some of the changes that were made. But I'll also reiterate what Amy said earlier that the reasoning for some of the. But I'll also reiterate what Amy said earlier, that the reasoning for some of the council changes were not shared with us, so we may not know why they made some changes, but we could possibly explain some of the impacts based upon the proposed changes or adopted changes that the council made.
Gotcha. So, and I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So Councilman Crandall basically eliminated all the nodes from his district.
Correct.
And then I couldn't quite tell, Councilman Marx, did he eliminate them? Or that was a little unclear. Did he add some nodes and cut some nodes?
Yes.
He eliminated some and modified others as well. He eliminated, he shrunk some of the node area, even though the, admittedly, the nodes were more of a blob, as it were, without specific street designations and things of that nature until you drill down further. So, yeah, he did both.
And then were any, then what? Then Councilman Koch did the same thing with some of the nodes in his district?
Yes.
But not any of the other, there were no changes to the nodes in any of the other districts, other than, you know, adding this institutional, new institutional node down in by Councilman Young?
I think that's right.
Yes.
Yeah, just that, and there's a lot to go through, but that was sort of my impression going through. Again, thank you. Any other questions, comments? I mean, this was a...
Scott, I, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the summary of changes, because I was rereading the, the one you sent out last week, and I couldn't tell, I couldn't remember where, where things had changed. So this is, especially if we can get our hands on the summary, I can take the time to go back and kind of cross-reference what the changes were. So I really appreciate you guys taking the time to pull that together for us.
I think Amy did a great job, and I think was valuable to see which council members wanted certain changes as well to get a sense of what their priorities are and what that could mean for the future.
And Amy, will your document be available to the public as well? I mean, any thought about putting it on the planning website or?
So that document was based on the resolution that was, you know, used to adopt it. So all the information is already online. Whether we post this some other way, I don't know. But it is out there. I didn't make it up from scratch. All I had to do was follow the, the memo that came with the adoption of the master plan and just put it into a visual format.
Got you. Anybody else have any questions, comments, thoughts at the moment? Well, again, thank you very much then for the presentation. We will now move on to other business. Ms. Benzley will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting.
Thank you, Chair Halopka. Bill 2425, 2025 Basic Services Maps for the purpose of repealing the Basic Services Sewage Map, the Basic Services Water Supply Map, and the Basic Services Transportation Map and adopting new Basic Services Maps in their place. Bill 2625, Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Baltimore County for the purpose of adopting the county budget consisting of the current expense budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, the capital budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, and the capital improvement program for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2027, 2028, 2029, 2030, and 2031, and to appropriate funds for all program expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, as here and after indicated. Bill 3225, Large Truck and Commercial Vehicle Parking Penalties for the purpose of establishing escalating fines for tractor-trailers that repeatedly violate the prohibition on parking in residential zones or within a certain distance of a residential zone during a certain time, clarifying the authority of the county to tow a tractor-trailer that is in violation of such parking after a certain number of offenses within one year and generally relating to parking. And finally, Resolution 2625, Establishing the Baltimore County Equine Legacy Area, a resolution of the Baltimore County Council establishing the Baltimore County Equine Legacy Area. Since the 1700s, Baltimore County has been the center of Maryland's equestrian industry with thousands of acres worth of terrain ideal for pleasure riding and steeplechasing located in the Worthington, Greenspring, and Long Green Valleys. Baltimore County's equestrian industry accounts for $1.87 million in steeplechasing tourism dollars spent annually, $17.5 million in horse-related capital expenditures, and $1.1 billion in non-horse assets. And equine activities serve to protect the open landscapes, valleys, forests, and streams of the county's rural area. The county council believes at this time the designation of an equine legacy area is appropriate and will help to protect the historic nature of this area and the benefits provided to the county's equine industry, as well as help preserve the valuable natural and cultural resources upon which it relies. The equine legacy area shall consist of all栖息地land in the area identified on the map attached here and to as exhibit A, and that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. I guess I have a question. The, the equine legacy area, does it change any of the, I mean, I, I read the, the fill, and the bill, it's a lot of whereas is and not much in terms of what was resolved other than to establish the legacy area, but does it change any of the land use rules or regulations?
Not yet.
Is there more anticipated?
The Valley Planning Council has been in touch with an attorney about drafting legislation that would require the development taken into account whether it's an equine legacy area. We've not, that's not been introduced yet, although there's some indications the councilman may do so. This is, the, the planning board in the master plan approved an action item that would allow this to be studied further, because when planning staff first saw this request, we had some significant concerns. We urged the councilmen to also step back and take another look at whether or not the study was still viable. He chose to go ahead and introduce the resolution, but at this point, we're uncertain as to its impact on any development activity going forward.
Because I couldn't help but notice that the map, basically, it's, it's everything just outside the Erdle up to about, what, two-thirds of the way up the county, given that there's already, you know, there will be a vote next year about the Erdle, and it just, this feels like a, yet another, another attempt to make sure nothing gets, much gets developed outside. So, I'm just curious. Ms. Minessa says, did I see your hand up?
Um, yes, I was just going to ask the same thing about the, whether there was overlap between the Erdle and this equestrian zone or legacy.
They, they sent the map out. I don't know how well anyone can see this, but it's, it seems to follow just basically the, the outline of the, of the Erdle on up, so.
I did have a question about Bill 3225. On the, it, it looks like, on the bill, it's crossed out, clarifying the authority of the county to tow a tractor. Is that the amendment? Amended bill? Where clarifying the authority of the county to tow a tractor-trailer that is in violation of such parking prohibitions after a certain number of offenses within a year.
That would be what we've presented here as the amended bill as adopted by the council.
So the fact that it's crossed out means that the county does not have to do that?
If, if it's struck, if it's stricken like that, it means that was eliminated as an amendment.
Okay.
And the other, any other questions, comments at this point? If not, I want to thank you, Ms. Benzley, for the, the review. This is the conclusion of our agenda. As a reminder, our next meeting is in person on Tuesday, June 17th. The exact time will be sent out when we get the material, probably next week. So stay tuned for that. Do I have a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second. All of you ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone want to stick around? All right. Well, I'll see everyone in person in a little less than two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.